And they say, don't mix religion with politics.
The Alderman can say, oh yeah, that's a good idea.
This is religion and community.
Change that doesn't allow for the historical buildings.
Education. So if the gentleman changes the measure.
Oh, no.
Enough there, Dave. Enough stuff.
No, I did not know that Manchester Street. So you've got my things at the street view. I could plug in all of 22 Manchester Street or some other addresses. Can you see the whole thing?
You don't? Oh, good.
I think we were gonna get going. Jerry joins. We've got enough for a forum anyway.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the order of this meeting of the Nashua City Planning Board, June 1st, 2017. Can I get the rule call, please?
Yes. Mayor Donches.
Present.
Mike Peterson.
Present for Mayor Donches.
Adam Barley. Scott Leclair.
Here.
Ed Weber. Here. Alderman Sean McGinnis. Alderman Thomas Lopez. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
Dan Kelly.
Present.
David Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Rupucci. Sanel Mistri. Megan Gunkas.
Okay. We have before us minutes from the May 18th, 2017 Planning Board meeting. Anybody a chance to review those and make a motion to accept or amend?
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kelly to accept as written. Second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, they're accepted? Okay, Roger, Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. If you turn to your packet, I'll quickly go through the items the board received after your packet was mailed to you. The first item is an amended planning board agenda. You had a new, other business item number four, which is a referral from the Alderman Planning Economic Development Committee. We'll speak to that when that comes up. And also, another business number, case number two, instead of three, new projects is only two. You have a communication concerning case number one, which is 122 Manchester Street, requesting continuance and also providing a written extension for the 65-day rule to July 13th.
Okay, so that won't be on the table until 13th of July, then, at this point?
Correct. That's our understanding. They said they would be in touch in his communication to the board and staff, that they would be in touch with the planning staff at some point in the near future.
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll find out and we'll, once we have that date certain, or we may be in the same situation as we are tonight, we don't know until we hear from them.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a note to the public, if anybody's here for 122 Manchester, that won't be heard tonight, so.
Okay. You've got a communication from the Vice Chair of the Capital Improvements Committee. There was a special meeting held last night on two projects, and we can discuss that when that comes up under other business item number two. You have a copy of an amended ordinance, which was other business item number four, and an item, another item in your packet. That's it, Mr. Chair?
Okay, thanks. Can I get any reports from committees and liaison?
Just the item that we're gonna be recommending tonight, coming before the board, on the Greeley Park ordinance. That'll be later.
And also, I'd like to report that the Executive Director for NRPC has resigned, moved on to Rock again, and NRPC is currently looking for his replacement.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All right, so we're now gonna move into the executive session. I'm gonna read the procedure of the session here for the folks in the public, and so the procedure of the meeting is gonna go as follow. I'm wanting to take a look at, or any legal notice of conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision. I'll read that and determine, and after determination, if the application is complete and ready for the board. If that application is indeed accepted by the board, we'll go into a public hearing, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of the project. Then they'll speak to whether or not they agree with any recommended stipulations that might be in the staff reports, and the board will have opportunity to ask follow-up questions. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to a plan. If you wanna come up, go ahead and come forward, come to the microphone. Make sure you state your name and address for the record right when you start. This is the time for you to, you know, express any of your concerns or ask any questions that you might have with the plan. I'll next ask for anybody in the audience that is wishing to speak in favor of the plan, and then, you know, you come up and do the same thing. Again, make sure you state your name and address for the record. The next testimony will come, then I'll ask for any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and then the applicant will give a, the applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns that have been expressed by folks in the public that come up. We'll have one last round where I'll ask for folks in the public to get together if they want to and have one more rebuttal to that second discussion by the applicant. After that, once that's completed, I'll call the public hearing to an end on that particular item, and we'll move into what we call a public meeting, where the board will discuss and deliberate and vote on the application that's before us. A couple of things to keep in mind during the meeting. We ask that if you do come up, that you keep your remarks to the subject at hand, okay, the application that's being heard, and not, try not to repeat stuff that someone else may have already commented on. We do wanna be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and given, or presented and all, considering all applicable approval criteria that we have in our Nashua revised ordinances for special use permits or site plans. I thank everybody for their interest, and also, if you've got a cellphone or something like that, it'd be appreciated if you turn it off at this time, so it's not ringing or something in the middle of the meeting. All right? Thanks. So, we're gonna move on. So, old business, conditional special use permits, there are none of those. Old business subdivision plans, none of those. Old business site plans, the case number one, as you heard earlier, is gonna be not heard tonight and moved to the 13th. So, we're gonna start with new business, conditional special use permit, case number two.
Mr. Chair, regarding that case number one, does the board have taken the action to have this continued?
Roger, I think we talked about, there wasn't a need, or?
Well, it's a letter requesting continuance to the July 13th meeting and an extension extending the 65-day approval requirement. Normally, you accept those letters for continuation. It was continued to this date, and now they're asking for another continuation. I don't think you need to take any action, as long as you want to accept their letter. You're welcome to, if you like.
I think we have to, because the board extended it to this date, and this date is upon us, and as far as I'm concerned, they don't have an extension until this board grants the extension.
So, you could just take a motion on that extension?
But let me discuss first, can this go on indefinitely?
It's possible. I can't really answer that question. At some point, there'll need to be a decision. When? I'm not sure.
My concern is-
I think we'll wait till the 13th, and maybe we'll have some better direction at that point in time, as to where things are working out. The zoning board meeting was just on May 23rd, and I believe the applicant is trying to figure out what they wanted to right now, and so this continuance, if you want to vote to continue it to July 13th, you may do so. The 65-day extension is something the applicant grants to you, so the clock doesn't run out.
Right, we understand that. But my concern in asking how long can this go on for is, you know, we had a public hearing, and then there were some changes and so on, and I can remember what happened after that, and we did discuss the changes, but we didn't go into the public meeting.
Right.
And we went into this tabling, but I don't know how long ago this application was filed, and if, say, a year from now, this hasn't been acted upon by this board, code's changing, conditions are changing out there. For instance, across the street from this development, there's another development that's proposed as an application in-house that's been reviewed. So, things are changing, which will affect, you know, how we look at this application, so that's my concern. How long can this go on for?
Right.
It's unfair to other similar applicants who are coming in under the new code, or new codes that may apply.
Sure.
So, I think there needs to be some kind of a time limit on extending this, which is, it's not approved. If it's an approved plan, and we see where people come in a year later, and they want an extension, we, you know, we grant it case by case, but this is, here is an open application.
It is, yep.
Steve, they submitted, I believe it was late summer, it was probably the end of August. I'd have to go back and look at the file, but it's when the application was submitted to staff initially.
Right.
So, it has been, I think your first meeting, we had a few meetings that were scheduled that were never held to begin with.
Right.
But yes, at some point, you'll have to go back and refresh your memory, because the board had held the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and was all set to deliberate at the next meeting and make a decision until the events unfolded, as you all are aware of.
Right. But we did that on March 30th, so I think it's reasonable to wait till the July 13th to decide if we need to do something else. That's probably not too far from the March 30th, anyway, but I'm open to-
Before we would, after that time, before we make it, I would certainly suggest that we have counsel, not the city council, but legal counsel, discuss that, bring them into this.
Yeah, I mean, we talk about that during the discussion, I guess, if we open it, if we take it off the table, but right now, it's still on the table, so.
Yeah, but I'm saying, before we say, do anything, really-
Yeah, I just think we probably can't talk about anything to do with the case, other than the logistics of whether we're gonna take it off the table or not, or extend-
Or keep tabling it.
Right, or keep tabling it.
Yeah.
Yes, there's really nothing else we can do without bringing it off the table.
Yep.
So, if you wanna, if you think it's a good idea to somebody to make a motion to just continue it on the table until July 13th, that's probably the most reasonable next step, unless people don't wanna do that, you know.
Well, if I could, I would make a motion that we request that we put it on the table until March 13th, with the proviso-
July 13th.
I'm sorry, July 13th.
Yep.
With the proviso that any further, any further requests for extension of tabling will require discussion by the board.
Bringing it back in discussion, that's fine, I think that's reasonable. I think that you wanna make that motion.
Yeah, I'm not sure I could do it again, so I'll have to rely on whatever words I said.
Well, let me summarize, I think you, we have a motion before us from Mr. Robbins to honor the request of the applicant to leave this application on the table until the requested July 13th timeframe, with the additional note that, you know, any further extensions will be, you know, will do in a formal discussion. Do you have a second for that? Second one, Mr. Chairman, any discussion?
Yeah, we have to, Chair, we need to draw a conclusion, so in order to do that, you gotta take it off the table, so the motion should say it'll be taken off the table at that time, and a decision made.
Yeah, I mean, I think we always have that option. I don't think we have to put that into the move, into the motion. That's always our option. Yeah, so, all right.
Yeah, 'cause this has gone on too long.
Yeah, I mean, you can definitely do that on July 13th. You can say, I don't want it to stay on the table anymore. Yeah, so, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All right, I'm gonna now move on to new business, conditional special use permits, case number two, Riviera University owner, application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit for the expansion of the site plan for various site improvements. This is located at 410 South Main Street and 15 Clement Street, and I'm gonna hear this, or we're gonna hear this, in conjunction with the site plan, which is case number five, for the same applicant. Can I have a motion, or has anybody reviewed this enough to make a motion that this application will start with the conditional use permit is ready to be accepted and taken into jurisdiction in the board? Any second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's motion to, if that application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction, it is passed, and also, with regard to case number five, the new business site plans, can I have any motion that it's complete and ready for jurisdiction?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Robbins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, applicant, ready to present for the conditional use permit and the site plan? You can just do it all together, if you want.
The name is Tim Manus, representing the firm of Jermaine, that says it's 33,000 dollars, but it is 17,543, and I'm here on behalf of Riviera University. And with me tonight is the chairman of Riviera University, here to answer any questions. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Board, and if it is acceptable, I will go through this presentation and provide a review of the project.
Yep.
And if I have the arrow correct.
Yep.
From this image you see, Clement Street is in the middle of the slide, Trotier Hall on the upper side of the slide, Dion Center on the southern end, and this really represents the heart of the project area that we're building. The inspiration, or the ground, really, of this project is the projects that have been ongoing at Riviera over the last three years, the Gateway Projects, the Dion Quad Project, and you see here the kinds of images that we're working on, and the kind of aesthetic that we're gonna extend to a part of the campus we're working on currently, with new walkways and site furnishings, landscaping, lawns, lighting, so that that aesthetic and the accessibility improvements have been made over to this next part of the campus. This is really them being part of the year, the next launch step in the campus improvements that they're undertaking. This plan shows the extent of our project currently, the project before you tonight, with the colored sections of the plan, the greens and so forth, representing our project area. Again, we're really focusing on the area around Dion Center, over toward the maintenance shop, and then on the upper side of Clement Street, as you look at this slide, the entries to Trotier Hall, and there are three entries to that building that are involved, creating more green space, kind of more gracious entrances, wider walkways, really, the walkways are quite narrow there now, especially along the street, they're only about four feet wide. So, we're increasing the, kind of pedestrian presence along that street, and improving the lighting along there also. What follows here are a number of images that show you the before, taken from either ground-level photos, or in this case, a Google image, or Google Earth 3D view, as best as we can get, and the transformation that we're looking to do. This image hovers above the street with Dion Center on the left, Trotier on the right, and again, this is what we are attempting to achieve with this project. Notably, you will see that at the Dion Center, which is on the left, we are creating kind of a new look to the face of that building by applying some stone and metal panel, kind of modernizing that entrance, making it more accessible, putting a pedestrian plaza on the outside, where currently, there's just a driveway there. You'll notice the pedestrian crosswalks, the wider sidewalks.
Can you hang on one sec?
I'm sorry.
I think we have a microphone issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, appreciate it. Okay?
So, again, illustrating the walkways on either side of the street, or on both sides of the street, all the way up to the Ed Center, kind of in the far right of the slide you see here, a ground-level view in this case, with Dion on the left, Trotier on the right, not exactly the same angle, but close, showing the new sidewalks, the Dion entrance, the new walkways and steps on the Trotier side. This is a, an angle of the Dion Center that explains things a little bit more, in terms of the entrance that we're creating there for this building. Riviera finds themselves actually taking VIPs and others through this entrance more than probably was ever initially intended when the building was built. This was kind of the back of the building, and now it's become a more prominent entrance, so we're trying to create that architecturally, more prominent idea through there by the work that's being done here. And the materials coordinate with the stone, and kind of the gray of some of the other buildings on campus, and you see it here in a kind of elevated view that illustrates how that works, with the two sets of doors going in. Again, an aerial view with Dion to the left, Trotier on the right, illustrating the walkways, the entrance over at Trotier. Those canopies you see there on the building are existing, in this case, on the front of Trotier Hall. The downhill side of the Trotier entranceway there on the right is shown, in this case, with a new walkway connection making easier passage for pedestrians in that case. This is the same area, just illustrating the landscaping, the walkways. And this is the north side, I believe it is, of Trotier Hall. That entrance is actually the entrance to the Business Division for Riviera University, fairly insignificant in terms of what the door is, so we're trying to add a canopy there, give it a little bit more significance with the landscape, make it more about the walkways, rather than just having a paved kind of road next to the building here, bringing it into that campus aesthetic that we had mentioned earlier. And then, of course, as we move further up, Clement Street toward the Ed Center on the right, again, increasing the sidewalk widths up through there, making the green space more apparent, kind of just cleaning those edges up, because right now, when you look at it, the edges are kind of broken, and where the paving starts and the sidewalk, or paving stops and sidewalk start is maybe a little bit less clear than it should be, so creating that walkway up through. And this is the entrance to the Ed Center, actually, a fairly nice architectural piece. We're trying to highlight that at the ground level with a small plaza, creating that kind of weight on the ground that corresponds with the building itself. And that, in as brief as I can be, is the summary of what we're trying to accomplish at Riviera this summer.
Okay. Any questions by the board? What's going on with regard to the conditional use permit? There is a letter in there from Dirk and Edson going through the approval criteria. If you had the chance to take a look at that. Questions? No? Okay. None from the board? How about questions with regard to the site plan? Anything on that? All right. I'll now ask, is there anybody from the audience that is wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? If you are, just come forward and give your name and address at the mic. Somebody? Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, so, anything else from the applicant?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's, unless you have specific questions, we'll be able to answer those, otherwise, we're good, I think.
Yeah, doesn't look, Steve, you got one?
No, not he's back.
Mm-hmm.
Catch him. I shouldn't have come. Good question, though. I was looking at the stormwater report.
Yes.
Was it prepared by you?
I'm sorry?
Was it prepared by you?
It was prepared by an engineer in our office, yes, not by me personally.
All right. I'm trying to find it in my packet. It talks about meeting the requirements of the ordinance to the maximum extent possible, and it set, it did so by demonstrating that the increase in runoff is a small percent of the capacity of the pipes.
Yes, sir.
Whereas, that may be a good argument. Typically, we look at where this water is going, and if you're familiar with the area, this, these pipes end up in a detention pond on lands owned by the country club.
Okay.
All right. So, I would have preferred that, that meeting those requirements was demonstrated by talking about the detention pond. Can the detention pond handle the extra runoff? We know there are pipes, they're probably large pipes, and we don't even know if they flow full in a 10-year storm. That wasn't shown. You could guess that it works that way. The other thing that wasn't talked about in this report, is a report summary stamped by an engineer, didn't talk about the 100-year storm that needs to be addressed as well. What happens in a 100-year storm? Can, you know, would a pipe overflow? Would, I mean, how is it handled? Most applicants go through that exercise. So, it asked that if it hasn't been done yet, and reviewed by the city, that it be done prior to getting a building permit, something like that, a condition like that.
Okay, and just to, on the process that we did go through, well, obviously, we submitted our plans, engineer reviewed them, we got an initial letter from Gene, which we responded to with that report that you have, and then we got a follow-up letter, and correct me if I'm getting this wrong here, we had a few comments on the follow-up letter to take care of, which I think we took care of, but I don't, none of those comments included the comments you're making now, so, I mean, we'd obviously be happy to work with Gene and give her whatever information she's looking for, so.
And I have a comment here, and you're right, the comments don't address stormwater, but because the engineer says that this stormwater design meets the stormwater management standards to the maximum extent possible, and I know that the standards ask that you look at 100-year storm.
Okay.
That should be addressed.
Okay.
At least in the letter form, but at least it goes in record.
Sure. Absolutely.
That's the case. Now, I also noticed while I was out there, that- that just beyond your sidewalk repair limit, there are some, what I call unsafe conditions, maybe some trip hazards. Maybe it's something that you might just want to address during the work. And, you know, one might argue that, well, it's the city's responsibility, but what does it get around to doing it? You have a lot of pedestrians that be in the college and all of that. So, if you can just, I mean, they're not, they're within, within the college frontage.
Okay. Along the library, or just?
Across from the library, so that'll be
Mental Hall.
On the south side.
Yes. Or Memorial Hall, maybe? Across the, across south Main Street?
Across Clement Street.
Across Clement Street, okay.
Those are the only comments I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can you, while you're up here too, just, you're, just discuss, there is two waivers that you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
In here, just to summarize them.
The two waivers are as follows. Let me get to that letter. They both address Section 190-279 regarding site plans and the required information, specifically on Point B, the bearings and distances of all property lines. Since we are really in the center of a much larger campus, we did not supply all the bearings and distances for all the parcels that Riviera owns. And number, or F, rather, dimension and square footage of all the buildings and structures is the same topic. They own many buildings across the campus, so we did not go to the extent of surveying and square footage tallying and all of that for what's essentially a site plan project in a small part of campus. That's the only two waivers we were seeking.
Any other questions for the applicant before we close the hearing? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll let you know if we have any others. So, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and take the board into the public meeting for purpose of discussing this, these two applications, really. The conditional special use permit and, the conditional use permit and the site plan. Seems like there wasn't too much. Steve, you had a concern, you think you might want to amend? Or have somebody add another stipulation or something that indicates that that the stormwater plan be revisited and address and review the 100-year storm requirements?
Yeah.
That basically what you're looking for?
We can add that.
So, there was two waivers on the site plan. We want to take the conditional use permit first, maybe. Anybody have any other discussion on the conditional use permit? If not, maybe to take a motion on that. That one's pretty clean. Anybody? Fire away.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, new business number two. That it is in compliance with, with NRO 190-133F. And there are no stipulations.
Okay. So, we have a motion before us by Mr. Kelly to approve the conditional use permit portion of this application. Anyone second that? Second. Second by Mr. Robbins. Any other discussion about the conditional use permit? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? None? Okay, motion passes. With regard to the site plan, I think the only real discussion we had about that was maybe this additional stipulation regarding the stormwater plan potentially being amended to include the requirements, or review and addressing the requirements of a 100-year storm event. And then, if you're gonna make a if you're gonna make a motion that you also address the two waivers. Anybody interested in a motion?
Yeah, I'll, nobody else wants to do that, no?
Okay, all right.
I would like to make a motion to approve new business number five, site plan. Riviera University. That it meets NRO 190-146D.
Yep.
And that the request for waiver of NRO 190-279B will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Secondly, the request for waiver of NRO 190-279F will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Did you say will, or will not?
Will. Will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the
Okay, I just thought, I only heard will.
Okay.
Okay, items three through eight, except as written. Adding one other recommendation, which is that they review the stormwater plan in accordance with the 100-year plan.
Okay.
You had better words.
All right, so we have a motion before us to approve new business number five, that it does meet the requirements, and the waivers, first two waivers be read as is granted and will not be contrary, and then adding a stipulation number nine regarding that stormwater plan be revisited to review the 100-year storm requirements and address them, you know? And
And items three through eight, as written.
Yeah. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Weber, discussion? Steve, that cover, what you were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thanks a lot. Okay, we're now gonna move on to new business conditional use permit, case number three. Owner, 1987 Tampozzi Limited Partnership. Applicant San Tran, this is located at One Cotton Road in the Zoned Airport Industrial Ward Two. Does anyone like to make a motion that the application is complete and ready for jurisdiction? Mr. Weber? Anyone second it? Mr. Kelly? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Applicant?
Mind if I stay up here?
Grab the mic, yeah.
Thought you could borrow one of these. Oh, you got the mic right there.
Now that I'm back here, I'll stay here.
Those are our whole points.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and here this evening, representing the applicant. The building is located on, off of Cotton Road. Unless you're familiar with that whole area, it's difficult, because it's such a small building. In front of it, the best way of my saying it, would be in front of it is the McDonald's, that long McDonald's that they drive through. That's in front of it, this is in back of it. This was an old building that was knocked down. It was a small building, and put up a new building. It's 2,880 square feet. 2,800 square feet is, is a very small building. Most of the buildings in the area are for industrial size. They're, the industrial sizes are 40, 50,000 square feet. Some of the smaller commercials, as you go down Cotton, the office buildings may be in the 30,000 square foot range. Difficult finding a tenant for this type of a building in this area. What you're going to be looking at most is probably service, small service type clients. People, hairdressers, barbers, nail people, something like that, that only needs a very small period of thing. In this particular instance, we have someone that does nails and things, and they would like to do it with 1,440 square feet. They're allowed by conditional use in the area. They have submitted a letter. I would request that that letter be incorporated by reference into the record.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
I'd be glad to read it if you want me to, but I think it pretty much states that this is a very small use for a small building.
Okay. We have, we have their letter, so.
There's not much more that I can say about it, because it's a small use with a small building. And it's trying to make use of that small building. The building itself is allowed. It was reconstructed, a new building was put up. And we have a use now. I think, you know, somewhere in the future, there'll probably be another, a service type business, personal service, something like a hairdresser or something, and that, we'll take the other half. But that's what you're looking, you're not looking for a General Motors or a Ford to move in that building.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Weber?
I have two things. Minor. First off, I went out there, the building looks awesome.
This what?
Nice, very nice. Very improved.
Thank you.
Good improvement. The dumpster doesn't have any doors in front, needs to be enclosed. Can the owner do that? And there is some landscape material that's like trunk of trees. I think it was done during the construction phase, and it was just left there. It's minor, minor stuff.
Landscaping, minor landscaping?
Yeah, there's trees or trunk of a tree that's been pulled out and just left there.
Stump.
Yeah, the stump is just there. It's minor, minor, minor stuff.
No problem taking care of those.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Robbins?
What, as you were, as you were speaking, what I was getting was that it is likely that the only use that you see or that you're proposing that could be made for this building is commercial use, when you said that it's likely that in the future, the other half of the building will be for similar services. Is that?
I would say that, I can't say for sure, Mr. Robbins, but I would, you know, you're looking at 1,440 square feet. It's this area. I would think that you may get a single attorney. You may get an accountant. You may get a hairdresser, a barber. I don't think a barber shop would go out there, because I don't, I don't think there's enough of a market for it out in that area. But those are the type things that goes. It's gonna be another small user.
If, if that in fact is, is the case in the future, will we be talking about this building again for a waiver?
You probably will be. It may be necessary to go get a variance, but you probably could be a waiver. This building probably could come before you again.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your candor in that, and thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Steve?
Just, maybe I'm a little dense here. I'm trying to understand this wording here. What is the 25%?
You can't understand it, you don't expect me to understand, do you, Steve?
Engineer, Prunier, I know you've done a very good job in the past explaining to me. The 25% requirement in the zone, what is that? Because here we asking for, we're going to be using 50%.
50%.
So, what is the 25% requirement about?
Because it was a building that was previously used. As I understand it from Linda, the building was previously used, and as such, that's, it's an allowed use for the 1,440 square feet.
Okay, so there's some grandfathering happening here?
In the airport industrial zone, which this is what this is located in, certain uses are allowed, as long as they don't exceed 25% of the building. This use is one of those. If it was only 25% of the building, they could have just got a building permit and moved on. But because they're exceeding that, they have to come in. Just like if another use, like another nail salon wanted to occupy the other half, they're gonna have to come back before the board for the same thing.
Okay, so the reason why it says, because it's exceeding the 25%.
It's exceeding the 25%, correct?
No, I get it.
It's such a small, it's a small office, a small building. And while I have it, I just wanted to let Mr. Weber know that the building has not received their certificate of occupancy yet. They are looking for that, and I did note that they, there is some landscaping that still needs to be done, and that the dumpster, there is no dumpster inside, and then they still have to get the fence up. So, before they get their CO, that will have to be addressed.
See, Steve, I know we both will understand it.
Took a while, though. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Hearing none, I'll ask, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? For the use permit? No? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Nope? Okay. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, then take this into the public meeting. So, board, we have it for us, it's just a conditional use permit. You've heard kind of the back and forth on the reason why we're here. Does anybody have any other discussion points they want to bring up?
Step one, and it's for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just hearing what you, so, the building hasn't been, had the occupant, occupancy permit that will be done before any occupants will come in?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to have that done before they get their final CO. I won't.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and then, it sounded like maybe Mr. Weber, if you, if maybe you want to add something about the dumpster, or are you okay with it?
I'm okay, because it's already, it's already in their original documentation that they brought before us before.
It's shown on the attached site plan.
Yeah, okay, it's already there. Yeah, okay. Okay? Any other?
Just, just a note, a note for the record that this does, does seem to be a very unusual situation, given the size of the building. And we, we are, we're essentially saying, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna grant a conditional, you know, conditional use permit with the likelihood that we're gonna be back at some point doing another one, because the building can't be used essentially, commercially, for the purposes in which the zoning area that it's in. And my understanding is if we were to do this, that the, the reason would be because it's a very unusual situation. And, and this, with the size of the building and location, and that this is not something that is normal, that we normally see in this type of situation. So, I guess I just, just want to be clear that, that we're not plowing new ground here. We're looking at this individually as, as an individual instance, making a decision based on the particulars.
Yeah, I don't think it's new, Dave. I mean, this is, this is really like kind of a small building on the edge of an industrial zone, right? And it's, it's not atypical that we, we see some type of retail and stuff trying to edging on the edge of these types of zones. And this one's like really close to the edge, right? It's right across from the mall, that mall, and so it's almost, to me, it's almost more better a commercial site than a industrial site, really. It's just, it was that way. I think it would, it used to be like a cabinet place or something before, yeah.
I think it would, it used to be like a cabinet place or something before, yeah? Kitchen place or something? I think it was, right? Yeah, so it was sort of that before, frankly. Okay, well, good. All right, anybody want to make a motion? Fire away.
Yeah, I will.
All right, Mr. Kelly?
I'd like to make a motion to, to accept new business number three conditional use permit.
Yeah.
For the applicant San Tran, operating a business called Pearl Nails and Spa, and that it is in compliance with NRO 190-133 per NF. There are no stipulations.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve, and that the plan for new business number three does meet the conditional use permit, NRO 190-133F, with no stipulations. Anybody have a second for that? Mr. Weber?
A second.
Or Mr. Peterson, sorry. Any discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstention? None? Motion passes. Thanks.
All right, we're now going to look at new business number four subdivision plan. The owner being the estate of Estelle Berthome? I'm not sure I can say that right. Applicant LaFever Folio LLC, located at 266 Broad Street. Anybody had a chance to look at this and want to make a motion that this plan is, is complete and ready for board jurisdiction? Mr. Weber? Any second? Mr. Kelly? Discussion on that? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes? Okay. Applicant?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua. I'm here tonight representing LaFever Folio LLC. We're here tonight seeking approval for a three lot subdivision on a parcel located at 266 Broad Street. I'd like to give a brief presentation of the project, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay.
The subject parcel is MAP 138, Lot 460, and measures point eight acres in size. The site is located in the R9 zoning district. Property is abutted by Broad Street to the north, New Hampshire Ave. to the south. Single-family homes directing, directly abutting the site to the east and in the west. Single-family home exists on the property now on the north side of the lot, along with a paved driveway out onto Broad Street. There's also a detached garage located in the central portion of the site. Aside from a cluster of pine trees along the westerly property line, the remainder of the site is grass lawn. There's no wetlands on this site, and NRCS mapping indicates sandy soils. Topography is a gentle slope generally from the north to the south towards New Hampshire Ave. A sidewalk currently exists along the property's frontage on Broad Street. There's currently no sidewalks along New Hampshire Ave. in its entirety, including the property's frontage. We are proposing to subdivide this property into three lots for single-family residential homes. We're proposing to keep the existing house with frontage off of Broad Street. The existing detached garage will be demolished, and the existing driveway off of Broad Street will be relocated to the westerly side of the existing house. There'll be two new road frontage lots being proposed. New Lot 487 will have access off of Broad Street, located on the easterly portion of the site. New Lot 488 will have access off of New Hampshire Ave. So one of the goals of this subdivision was to try to keep the existing house that's on the property. In order to accomplish this, the project needed two variances from the zoning board for lot frontage and lot width for New Lot 487, again along the easterly portion of the site, and these variances were approved last month. The proposed lots range in size from about ninety-two hundred square feet to a little over thirteen thousand square feet, so all three conform to the R9 zone in terms of lot area. Lot, New Lots 460 and 488 also conform to all other dimensional requirements of the R9 zone. The new homes will have approximately a fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot footprint, which is consistent with the neighborhood out there. We're showing a fifteen hundred or thirty by fifty box on the plan for graphical purposes. I'd like to talk about a couple key elements of the project. First, regarding utility extensions and road improvements. So the new, the two new homes will be serviced by public sewer, Penetech water, and overhead utilities off of New Hampshire Ave. In order to accomplish this, we do have minor sewer and water extensions about a hundred feet from where they end in New Hampshire Ave up to our site. We are doing some roadway restoration and improvements on New Hampshire Ave per the request of the engineering department. They've asked us to introduce a rounding. Right now, New Hampshire Ave just has a ninety-degree bend, so they've asked us to keep a consistent road width and kind of provide a little bit of rounding there, which, which the applicant has agreed to do. Also important to note that we're not proposing any work or impact to Broad Street, so because all of our utilities are coming off of New Hampshire Ave, we are able to steer clear of Broad Street. I do understand that this section of Broad Street is scheduled to be paved possibly sometime later this summer or early fall. So certainly we want to get in and do any of our driveways and sidewalk work this summer before that takes place. The second element I want to talk about is stormwater, always a sensitive topic. This property is located in an older area of the city. The reason I say that is because there's currently no formal drainage on New Hampshire Ave right now, and the drainage in Broad Street is a combined sewer. So there's no real location for us to go with, with drainage. And also, based on a butter testimony at the zoning board hearing, we are aware that there are localized, is localized ponding on New Hampshire Ave during heavy rain events. Again, there's no drainage out there, so it doesn't surprise me that that, that that occurs. The road is very flat out there, if you've, if you've driven it. So as stated in the SAF report, we're proposing to use the sandy soils on site to, to manage our stormwater and recharge it back into the ground. We're proposing three leaching catch basins in the rear of each lot that will capture grass areas in the case of Lot 460, a portion of that driveway, and also the roof areas on this site. Due to these drainage improvements, our calculations show that the post-development rates of runoff leaving the site will be less than or equal to the existing condition. Therefore, it's our opinion that the project meets the stormwater regulations outlined in the land use code, and will improve the drainage situation on New Hampshire Ave. The third item I'd just like to point out is a screen fence. So one of the stipulations from the zoning board was to add a screen fence along some of our property lines. So we do show on the plan, on the, on the plan on the right, the topo subdivision and lot grading plan, we do represent a six-foot-high stockade fence along the easterly property line of, of New Lot 487, and the westerly property line of New Lot 488. And, and those are shown on the plan per the, per the ZBA stipulation. There's a chain link fence out there now, so that will be an improvement on that. We do have two waivers we're requesting tonight, in a letter dated May 16, 2017. If you don't mind, I'd just like to paraphrase, specifically the sidewalk waiver is a little lengthy, so I'll try to keep it brief. Section 190-212, we're, we're asking for a waiver of sidewalks along New Hampshire Ave. The property is unique in that it has frontage on both Broad Street and New Hampshire Ave, existing sidewalk along Broad Street. New Hampshire Ave is a dead-end, low-volume residential road. There's currently no sidewalk curbing or drainage along the entirety of New Hampshire Ave, including about the ninety feet along our frontage. Constructing a sidewalk in this location would serve little public benefit. In fact, constructing sidewalk along the property's frontage, along with the associated curbing, could worsen the existing drainage condition on New Hampshire Ave. The land use code has a provision for the situation in which the applicant can provide a contribution in lieu of sidewalk construction. It is our opinion that we meet the criteria outlined in NRO Sections 190-212D2 and 190-212E1 related to that contribution. So the applicant proposes to contribute a sum of thirty-seven fifty, which is equal to fifty dollars per linear foot of frontage along New Hampshire Ave, unless the driveway interruption. The second waiver we're asking for tonight is for overhead utility services. Currently, New Hampshire Ave and the houses along it are serviced by overhead utility lines. We're proposing to service the two new homes via an overhead service off New Hampshire Ave. A new pole would be needed to, a new pole would need to be set in order to provide underground service to these lots. Allowing the project to be serviced by overhead utilities will be within the character of the neighborhood, and will not require the applicant to incur additional construction costs associated with the underground wiring. So in summary, we believe the application is complete and conforms to the National Land Use Code subdivision regulations. The recommended conditions in the staff report are acceptable. We respectfully seek your approval tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thanks. Questions for the applicant? Weber?
Will the roof drains be going onto the grassy area or onto the driveways?
So the roof drains for the new building, the back half of the roof is, is obviously going to sheet flow back into, into the rear of the sites where it will be captured by the leaching catch basin. We have a note on the plan that's located on the, on the left side here, I'm showing it with my cursor, that requires, that requires the builder to capture the front of those roofs and pipe it to the back, so that the, the entire roof from, from the two new houses will be going into the leaching catch basin, and the back of the existing home will be going into the new, the leaching catch basin.
Okay. Second question. What is the distance from the house on 487 to Broad Street? What's that distance? Driveway distance?
Don't have that in front of me. I'm going to guess it's about a hundred, a hundred feet.
Okay, I have a question for staff on that. Did the fire department have any indication that there was a, in the past, I've seen or heard that a house that has a certain amount of distance from, has to be sprinkled? Was this the case or not the case with the fire department?
That didn't come up in the discussions with the fire department when they reviewed them.
The only comments we received were, from the fire department, were related to the new street addresses.
That is something that, when it comes to building permit time that they would review and at that time to...
Oh, okay, okay.
Other questions? Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do make a clarifying comment on the request for a waiver on number one.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make sure it's clear that the waiver addresses the issue of New Hampshire Ave and not just Broad Street. It's a request for a waiver of 190-212 blah, 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 which requires sidewalks and pedestrian right-of-way on New Hampshire Ave. There are sidewalks already on Broad Street. And that's my second question, is are you going to repair those sidewalks when you put the second cut in?
On, on Broad Street?
Yeah.
We're not proposing any, any changes to the sidewalk or the curbing out in Broad Street, aside from where we're coming in with our new driveways. We're going to provide new tip-down curbs and ramps there.
Okay, so you are, the cut is going to be melded in to the existing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And again, we want to make sure we...
You have any problem with the clarification on waiver number one?
Yes.
No? Yes?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr.?
Thanks. When did you get the ZBA approval for the reduced frontage?
The original meeting was in March, I believe, in which it was approved, and then we realized there was an advertising error in the, in the dimensional zoning that was listed on the advertisement, so we had to come back in May, in which it was also approved. I believe in May nine.
All right, so it was recent, okay. Because typically, a staff report covers that, but there was no indication that, that was obtained. Now, Tom, in your, in your discussion about stormwater, I think you said three catch, leaching catch basins per lot. I, but you probably meant one?
Yes.
Okay. One each?
One per lot. Each one is located in the rear of the, of the home.
Okay, all right. You might have just added and saying three.
Sorry.
Just, just for discussion purposes, do we, do we minus the width of driveways from sidewalk calculations as a rule?
Do I say that again?
Do we minus the width of the sidewalk, the driveways from the sidewalk length?
Typically, no.
Typically, no. Why do we do it in this case?
I don't know. Do you know why?
Nope. Okay, so that, that should be altered, then? That should be changed.
Typically, no, we don't take...
Typically, we don't.
It's usually the frontage.
And so the entire frontage of the lot.
Yeah, we have to be consistent.
Yeah.
I think that is how it was done for the recent project at 12 Will Street. That was a one into five subdivision, and that's where I started my waiver request letter from, so.
Oh, really?
It was something our office...
Got away with that one, huh?
Not typical, yeah, yeah. It's usually the frontage, it's just the frontage.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I, I think in extreme circumstances where it tends to be unreasonable, again, I think the board has in the past, you know, made some adjustments, I think, I don't know if it, if it's allowed under the code, but I think I've seen that done here.
This has ninety feet of frontage on the, so it'd be forty-five hundred?
Ninety-five feet, yeah.
Yeah.
So the calculation was, was based on less, a twenty-foot driveway, so it's based on seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
Times fifty dollars a foot.
Right.
Just want to point that out.
Yeah, well, we can ask, would you be amenable to, would your applicant be amenable to the ninety, ninety times fifty, forty-five hundred? That's typically what we're looking for.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So we could stipulate it that way?
Would it be ninety, ninety-five feet or ninety feet?
I didn't, whatever the frontage is, I thought...
I think it's ninety-four and something.
Yeah, you're right, Dave, and we'll just, the full frontage.
Maybe ninety-five feet, and that would be four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Four seven fifty, okay. Great, so, okay. I have, any other questions, Steve?
No, I just...
I just had one planned question, just, it looks like there's, the fencing is drawn across the south side of Lot 488. Is it, that's, that's correct? So that lot's kind of fenced in with, all the way around, with the exception of the driveway?
I think what you're looking at, at the plan, the fence with the X's, the big black X's, is a silt fence.
That's just the silt fence?
Temporary silt fence for construction.
All right, so that's not the new fence, yeah?
No.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that would have been kind of strange.
There is chain link fence out there now, we're proposing to, to take that down.
Okay.
Mr. Robbins?
May, may I ask staff a question? Lot 488, does that qualify as an irregular-sized lot which requires a hundred and ten percent of the square footage?
I mean, it's not that irregular.
I mean, it's not that irregular.
Usually, if it's like three-sided or, you know, like a trapezoid, that's usually where we see that. Yeah. And it's more like just...
Irregular-sized lots.
Longer on one side, yeah. What do you think?
I don't have an axe to grind on this. I just want to make sure that we're operating consistently.
Okay. So I think the reading is no?
No.
It's like a pretty standard lot. The lot line is slanted in the back, but it's not... That's not uncommon from a geometric point of view. It's not a perfect square or rectangle.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
It's when you get into the seven or the five-sided lots, and you've got narrow points and...
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, I'll now ask for... Is there any testimony from anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Go ahead and come on up and just make sure you give your name and address when you start. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jill Jason. I live at 4 New Hampshire Ave. I abut to the west of Lot 488, and I'm not opposed to the subdivision. My only concern is the placement of the house on Lot 488. At the zoning board meeting, I expressed my concerns, and Mr. Shaw said to try to place the house as much toward the center or the right side as possible. He said it was not a stipulation, it was a recommendation. Mr. Boucher encouraged abutters to attend this meeting, so here I am. I noticed on the plan that the house is still located to the left. What brought this up was in early February, the house was located in the center of the lot, and then in late February, it was moved closer to my property. So I'm expressing concern over that. I noticed on the legend in the back of the room or on that plan, a gas line and gate valve. And I'm wondering if it is natural gas gonna be piped into these homes? I don't believe we have gas now, so I'm just wondering where it's coming from. Or is it propane? I've never heard of piping propane, though. The drainage issue, I would invite you to take a drive out to the property when it's raining and take a look at the lake that forms in front of my house. I express concern about the drainage at the zoning board, and it sounds like, you know, they've done their homework, but again, I just want to say that the drainage is poor. There are no sewers for it to go anywhere, so I have a nice ice skating rink in the wintertime. And that's it. Again, I'm not opposed to the plan, I'm just opposed to a house being put on the left when it could be put in the middle.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? No? Okay. I guess I'll ask for the applicant to come up and maybe address the concerns that have been brought up by the audience. Looks like we just really have...
Those three points.
The house, yeah, the house. You can step through them if you want.
Yep. So we're talking about the house on Lot 88 on the westerly portion of the property. If you look at my cursor...
Yep.
She lives right here, so what we represent on these plans is we show a box of a home, we show a driveway, we show some grading and drainage to show that the property can support a lot, can support a home. The builder reserves the right to make minor modifications and shift the building wherever he wants, as long as he stays within the setback. So I don't have an answer for you tonight on specifically where that house is going to be. I will say, by pushing it just because of the angle of that rear lot line and the rear setback, the further you push that house to the east, it's gonna push it closer to the road and also push it kind of into that rounding there on New Hampshire Ave. So if you look at my cursor here, if you started shifting the building this way, it would tend to get close to the street. If you see where the building is now, it's kind of in line with some of those other buildings. So that would be my response to that first point. Second point is the ledge in the gate, and we typically will show a gas line and gate valve in our legend. It's just kind of a holdover. The current plan is to show... Is to service these units via propane. We have talked to the gas company. It would require... There's no gas out in Broad Street right now, so it would require us bringing a gas line through the property, essentially providing an easement through one of the first two lots along Broad Street to service the back of the parcel. So that's currently not in the plans, but we are talking with the gas company. And similar to what we did for the existing sewer and overhead utility for the existing home, we provided an easement for that across Lot 487. If we did bring any utilities off of Broad Street, we would do the same thing. And that would be reflected on the final plan, how we intended to serve. But as I said, right now, we're intending to service it via propane. Lastly, drainage. As I said, we recognize that there's probably a local ponding issue out there. As with many of those roads, they don't have any drainage. I think the soils are pretty good out there, so that shortly after the rain event, once this water gets into the grassed areas, aside from the road, it'll drain into the ground. We're contributing less from our site. There's little to no runoff coming off our site, and we're contributing less than what was there getting there originally. Secondly, we're also removing green... Removing pavement on New Hampshire Ave, that little corner, which is gonna open up some more green space there to allow more area for the water to go back into the ground. So my testimony tonight is, we recognize there may be an existing drainage issue, localized ponding out there. There's not many options considering the current condition out there with lack of a city drainage system, and we're improving it from the existing condition.
Mr. Weber?
Yes. On your proposal on 488 with the location of the house, are you saying that if you moved it more to the center, that you would have a problem with the driveway? That it would go into the radius? Was that your answer?
That was one of the results of that, that would be...
Could you skew it?
Also, the home would get pushed further towards the street.
Yeah. If you could skew it, the driveway, in other words, not square off the house, but at an angle, that would let you be more to the center and yet still come out where you're onto the street? Not turn the house, but turn... Let the driveway skew. The second one is, on your new pavement, would you be able to do the elevation of the road so that it goes back onto the new lumen grass in that area? Can you let the roundness of the... So you get rid of the ponding, so it comes back onto that area that you're putting new lumen grass?
Yeah, we can try to introduce a little bit of pitch there. The road is dead flat now, so it's gonna be very tough to... Essentially, we have a mill and overlay of the area where we're doing the sewer and water extension, and then peeling back the pavement in that area for grass. So we can try to provide a little pitch there.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I'd like to talk about the gas line coming. Will the deeds have an easement identified to allow for the gas line? Should it ever come?
The deeds for these lots here?
Yeah.
They would not unless we were proposing them.
Okay, so you're not expecting to have a gas line? So the legend should be removed?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
If we do decide to move forward with providing gas for these three lots, we would have to coordinate that with the utility company. That would involve tapping into the gas line, which is on our side of Broad Street, but it's still within Broad Street, and then running an easement through the site, which would have to be on the plans.
Yeah, currently, there's no gas on the plan, though. It's just in the legend.
No, I understand that. My question has to do with, in anticipation, would you put an easement claim on the deed, whoever buys these houses? So they know that there's an easement for the gas line should it come through? If you're not gonna provide it, then it's out in the dispute.
Well, I think they would make that decision, as the builder make that decision, how they're going to service those homes. I don't think that they would provide an easement through a lot that they're selling for a future gas line expansion.
So it's moved. It's propane forever?
It's propane, or they may decide to do gas now, in which we'll revise the plan, and the final plans will show a gas service coming on.
And the deed. And the deed will reflect that as well?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm not sure I understand why the location of the house cannot be moved to accommodate the abutter. Move it to the east. How far would you have to go to accommodate the abutter's problem?
The reason I'm a little non-committal is because we're just, as I said from the beginning, we're just showing a 30 by 50 footprint here. And so if they decide to build a ranch that maybe is one-story but has a bigger footprint, I don't want to commit to moving the house over when it... Maybe it won't fit within that setback, 'cause the setback chokes down as we move from west to east.
I understand that. What I'm trying to do is address the issue that was raised by the abutter. Do you have a solution?
I don't. I think we've, you know, addressed some of the visual impacts with the screen fence there. You know, aside from saying that we will try to move it as far east as possible, but again, I don't want to shoehorn them in into specific building size or building footprint or building location.
Again, for the record, my name is Jerry Prunier. And speaking to the applicant, he will move the house as far east as he can, depending upon what type of house he builds. So if it's just a square box, he can move it probably quite a few feet more. But if it's like you say, a ranch, it may stay pretty much there, even though part of it goes east as well. But he understands your concern, and depending upon the house he builds, he'll try to keep it as close to the east of the lot as possible. That's the best that he can.
Okay. Press up, Mr. Seija.
Okay. Steve?
The... Whereas the easement for utilities coming off of Broad Street for the existing house at parcel 460, it doesn't have a big impact to Lot 47 because it's towards the end of the driveway. The easement on New Hampshire Drive on parcel 488 for utilities of 47, that's pretty significant. Some cases, just more than, I mean, a little bit more than 20 feet wide. Is there a reason that we really want the water to come from New Hampshire Drive for 47? Can be brought from Broad Street instead and reduce that easement?
I have to zoom in. I believe the water is located on the other side of Broad Street.
Oh.
And we're trying our best to stay out of Broad Street. Yeah, it looks like it's on the north side of Broad Street.
These utility easements really put, you know, constraints on people's use of their lot.
Yeah, yeah. Well, certainly, they would know full well, you know, that burden on the property. You know, we think that's the best way. Our goal has always been to stay out of Broad Street. If we have to trench all the way across Broad Street, that's gonna be disruptive and expensive. So...
And the separation between the water service and the sewer service, is that like a code requirement? That it be that?
We've got 10 feet horizontally, and then where they cross, we've got details in the plan specifying what they need to do where those cross. Penachuck did review the plans and was okay.
Yeah, it's just, as I said, it limits the use of the property. Whereas on, you know, the driveway, the end of the driveway, that long driveway, it's not a big deal, but here is someone's. They want to plant a tree, they want to put up a... Well, shed can be moved, but who knows? Maybe it limits the house being moved a little bit. There's a little impact to that.
But then if we go to Broad Street with all the utility services, then we've gotta get service to 488, and that's... Those utilities start cutting through those other lots, so...
No, I was just thinking about 487.
Oh, okay.
And you might have an error here. Unless someone picked it up already, type on your plan for the existing service, the 460. You probably don't have the plan in front of you. We can see it there. It says, "Existent service, service to remain." I think you mean, "existent sewer." That could be corrected.
Yes.
And you put on the plan that the guy wire, what it holds, would be relocated. I don't know how they'll do that, but position of guys, you know, that has to do with how the pole is held, which direction the pole will fall if not held. So we'll work with EverSource to figure that out.
Yeah, we took an initial meeting with EverSource, and we talked about servicing those two units from that pole, but certainly, we need to have another meeting with them to finalize that. We may have to reset that guy wire back on our property and perhaps provide them an easement for that.
Right. Insolent, Mr. Jay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant's rebuttal? Okay, at this time, do have one more opportunity for anyone in the audience. If you still have a concern, you can come forward. No? Okay. All right, hearing done, I'm gonna go ahead and take... Close the public hearing and move into the public meeting for this application. So we've got the subdivision plan in front of us. We've talked through a few different things. I think the sidewalk contribution was one thing that came up initially. It seemed like the full frontage was 47.50, if that's what we want, then we're gonna... I think someone's gonna stipulate that within the motion. That's pretty typical of what we've done. As far as the other waiver on the utilities, you know, the applicant's talked some about that, you know, the rest of New Hampshire's overhead utilities, that's been a pretty typical one for us, if it doesn't lend itself to improvement, you know, in the general area.
Can I just make a comment? Why, I didn't want to bring it up with the applicant. I understand, you know, the existing one on Broad Street is overhead, fine.
Yeah.
The two new lots, this is a case where you look at the intent of the law, like I talked about before.
Right.
And it has, I think, little to do with, well, the other properties. Here, you have an opportunity, and it's quite easy because you have new land, it's flat. There really aren't challenges to put in underground utilities to these two new lots. And the only reason offered, the only real reason that tends to be valid, that appears to be valid, is... that appears to be valid, is the cost, you know? But it's not an extraordinary cost, like they have to go through ledge or topographic challenges and so on. So, whereas I'm not going to stipulate or anything like that, or not, or try to deny the waiver, I, I just think, looking at waivers, we really have to pay a little bit more attention to the intent of wa, of, of the regulation. And, and seeking a waiver just simply because it's going to cost more. I, I think the only time we, we should grant that is when the cost is, you know, an unreasonable amount of cost. Like, we've dealt with before, we've dealt with those before.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sometimes they're pretty long, you know? Yeah, these are pretty short, and they're all on the construction site.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, it's up to, to making the motion whether you want to approve that or not.
I, I wasn't going to ask for, for denial, but just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. Good point. Any other thoughts? The, the centering of the house, it seems like the applicant has offered up to locate which, whatever kind of house is constructed to the eastern side of lot forty-eight as much as possible within the setbacks, I think was kind of the language that was offered.
Yeah.
I think if somebody wants that, they probably need to stipulate that as well.
Well, he's within, he's actually, his dimension off of the plan for his house is actually within code.
Right, right, but I think the comment was, you know, right now, they're showing it the thirty by fifty footprint, you know? Obviously, if it's a two-story house, you know, it's probably, that, that might not be that big. That's a pretty good-sized two-story house, so. You know, if that footprint is thirty by forty, you know, it could be located ten more feet off that western setback. So if we want that to be the way the house is positioned, pending what, you know, what the actual dimension of the house is, we should probably put that in the stipulation as well. Seems reasonable to me. The applicant was amenable to it, so I don't think that's an issue. So, anything, any other? Dave?
Well, yeah, I, I just, and Ms. Jason came and, and took time and, and came to speak with us, and, and I think that it's important that, that you understand that this, this really is being dictated by the fact that the existing house is staying, and that has to be cited, and has to have all of the appropriate setbacks. And it appears from looking at this as though that drives everything else. And that's, in my humble opinion, untutored opinion, that's why lot four eighty-eight looks the way it does with a strange angle, and why the applicant is saying that, depending upon the depth of the house they finally put in there, they have to get it closer to the west line, because that's the place where they have the most depth. And the applicant is, is doing everything right, in the sense that they're, they're doing everything according to the rules and regulations before, that they have before them, and they're working with them. And it's unfortunate that you've had a, a, a time when you have not had a house there, and all of a sudden, one's going to be potentially ten feet away from your property line. And it, it is unfortunate, and certainly, if I were a homeowner, I would think it would be unfortunate. But it is, they're, they're doing things the right way, and I just wanted you to know that, and, because you did take the time to come here, and, and we appreciate it. And thank you very much for coming.
Any other discussion, someone else?
Just a comment again regarding that, you know, it's recognized that the zoning board, you know, wanted to address, address the, the side, the side setback by, by asking the applicant to do their best to, to move it. Maybe at that time, they probably could have looked at a variance of the back, the rear setback.
Right.
Just encroach a little bit into that, would have given the, you know, a lot of room to move the house.
Right, yeah.
You know, five, ten feet of.
Doesn't sound like there was any, anything there. We didn't get, they didn't get that. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion? Ready?
You're so good at it.
Your night, my night.
Yes, your night.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business number four subdivision plan. Owner, State of Estelle, Bertha Mew. Location is two sixty-six Broad Street. Like to say that it is compliant with NRO one ninety, one thirty-eight G, and that there are two waivers requested. And on the first waiver, I would like to make a modification to the waiver. A request for waiver of one ninety dash two twelve, which requires sidewalks and pedestrian right of way, is on New Hampshire Avenue, is granted. Finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the ordinance. And the second request is for waiver of one ninety dash two twenty-one C, which requires all electrical communications line, line servicing the new developments is granted. Finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the ordinance. And number three will be any minor drafting changes. There is, I need help on, on the fourth item, which has to do with setback.
Well, I, I think that the, that what the applicant has offered, at least, and what my understanding of it was, that they would locate the house, the final house, whatever the configuration of it is, as far to the plan east as possible within the setback rule.
Okay.
You know, obviously, the dimensionality matters there.
And I had a note for, for the sidewalk contribution as well.
Okay.
It's fifty, what is it, fifty dollars per linear foot?
Yeah, that was.
Not to be, how many?
Forty-seven fifty.
Forty-seven. Forty-seven.
Yeah, you could, you could amend that to number one, to stipulation one, if you want, you know?
Okay. I will, with the board's approval, I'd like to amend number one to include that the contribution will be to the tune of forty-seven fifty.
All right. So.
Now, that's my notes.
Okay. Well, let's put it out, and then we can discuss it. So we have.
Did you have a number four? Did you have?
We have a motion for new business number four, two sixty-six Broad Street. That motion be that this plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO one ninety dash one thirty-eight G with a waiver for, number one, stipulation, a waiver for one ninety dash two twelve be amended to read the request for the waiver of one ninety two twelve, which requires sidewalks and pedestrian right of way along New Hampshire Ave, is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the ordinance, and that a contribution of forty, forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars be accepted in lieu of the sidewalk construction. The waiver as written in the staff report for one ninety dash two twenty-one C be read as is granted and will not be contrary. Number three as written in the staff report, and number four, that the, the house construction on the lot be located to the easterly side of the lot as possible within the setbacks requirements, final house. A second for that.
Second.
Second by Mike Peterson, discussion. Go ahead, Dave.
I, I would, I would hope that we could remove number four from the final motion. And, and the reason is that it, it's, it's a small, it's a small lot. We, we, the applicant has said that he will, for the best, in the best possible way, you know, advise that, that the house be as far away from the lot as possible. And, and our putting that as one of the conditions, I don't think in any way adds to anything. I mean, I, I just, a, a little concern, it's a small footprint. You know, once we, once we say, okay, this, this meets the rules and regulations as far as we understand them and pass, pass on that, I think that we should let things go forward. I, I really don't think that we should be making conditions that A, can't be enforced, and that B, kind of limit what legitimately can be done.
Thoughts, Mr. Kelly?
I, I would like, I would like to debate that, because I, I feel strongly that we have to go on record as representing not only the city, but also the, the abutters, and to do everything possible to try to accommodate people within reason. And the number four is, is stated as generously as we can. There's a lot of latitude there, but I do want it, I want the abutter to understand, and others, that we're trying everything we can do to accommodate two parties. And I'd like to keep it in.
Any else?
Like, Mr. Robbins, you know, we, we have taken applicants' word all the time. And I think we were told by Attorney Buckley last week during our training session that if you want it, get it in writing, get a commitment. He had a commitment as make an effort. And it may not have any teeth, as stated, but at least it shows that everyone is asking. And it's up to the applicant to, you know, respond or address. And the abutter is hearing that too, and it, it kind of shows, it shows goodwill. If it happens, great, if it doesn't, well, everyone tried.
Well, I, I, I can appreciate that, and I'm, I, that, that certainly resonates for me. I don't want to hold out any false hope to, to an abutter, so. Enough said.
Any else? Mr. Peterson?
Regarding number four, stipulation number four is, has no legal enforcement, nothing binding behind it. It's just sort of a statement of intent that we're asking the builder to take that into consideration when placing the structure on that lot. That's about it.
Yeah, I mean, my own two cents is, I think the builder ideally is, my guess is, probably wants the center as much as they can anyway, because it's, it's the same issue with their buyer, you know, being close to the other.
Yeah, the buyer's going to have to be close to the abutter.
So, you know, I mean, but, you know, it's, you know, I think it's, I think there's mutual benefit to putting the house towards the center, frankly, for the abutter and, and the buyer.
Yeah.
That's my two cents, but, but I'm good with the stipulation in there, frankly, because I agreed, Steve, that if, you know, we should just get it down in writing the way that we've talked about it. I, I don't think it's an issue leaving it in. Any else? Okay. Want to take a vote?
Second.
We already had a second, yeah.
Who by who?
Mr. Peterson.
Peterson, I didn't hear.
Okay. All right, hearing no further discussion, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, so we have some other business here tonight to go through. Let's start with the other business, case number one, review of the tentative agenda for determined proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to look at it, Mr. Kelly?
I have. I'd like to make a note that there's nothing of regional impact.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kelly that there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do you have a second to that? Second by Mr. Weber. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, could we take a five-minute break?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we're in discussions, other business. Just us now.
By the time he gets back, we'll be gone.
This is confidential, so we can't talk about it.
I have to go to the SCIF for that.
Yeah.
Secure, complementalized information facility.
Oh.
It's where all the fence contractors do their talking.
Oh, oh, okay.
If it's classified.
That's shop talk. Yeah, I don't know that.
The SCIF.
My wife should know that, she works on.
She will, but, you know, like, when Trump was at that meeting, and they were talking about all this classified stuff at a meeting, you know, in the public. Should have been done in a secure, complementalized information facility, basically, the big metal box.
Lead?
No. Just metal, but grounded. Electromagnetic waves cannot be.
That's true. That could be, how's that to help?
Well, the electromagnetic waves are everywhere.
Well, I'm saying, but to get concentrated, because EMFs can.
Actually, they're getting absorbed, and the walls are going straight to ground. It's safer, you're getting less.
Maybe that's why it's in my house, that of the, the big metal box.
Well, if you're like one of those tin foil head people, you put the aluminum foil over your head. Or, you know, there's all the talk about, of getting barged by electromagnetic waves and cell phones and every other type of.
Okay, how old are you?
He's young, he's way young.
Too young.
I'm seven, I'll be seventy-one this year.
Oh, my goodness. Looking pretty good for a septuagenarian.
I'll be seventy-nine.
Zach. Yes. Yes, we are.
Yes, I am. Trying to. Capital Improvement Plan, that's a lot of work.
God, it is.
Far.
Okay. So we'll move on to, again, here to other business, case number two, amendment to the FY two thousand and eighteen Capital Improvement Plan, adding two new projects. Mr. Kelly, you going to present that again?
Yes. We had actually three requests before us, and they were through one of them. I wasn't the chair. I had to refuse myself. And fundamentally, what they're trying to do is, is, on the first one, is to spend some money to get a head start on the, on the children.
Yeah.
And that, that got an A-one rating, which is the best you're going to do. The second one, participatory budgeting, is a, a big-ticket item that, that I think the committee agreed, wouldn't provide anything. It's a touchy-feely approach to.
Planning.
Where they want to get as many of the citizens involved in a planning aspect. And, and so the CIC saw it that way, and at best, gave it a D-one, which is dead on arrival.
D-two?
kind of rating.
D2? D2, right?
D2. I mean, D is not good, whatever number you put behind it. So, these are, are, we're looking, first of all, the CIC is a recommending body.
Right.
And if we approve of the approach that the CIC did, then it goes on into the Alderman, Alderman, the mayor and all, that's, they make the final decision on how to disperse the funding if they do.
Okay. Generally, we either make a, just a, a motion for a recommendation of, or, you know, positive referral or...
Well, fundamentally, what you're saying is we agree with the work that CIC did.
Yeah.
And forward that, those recommendations forward.
Yeah. So, does anybody have any more discussion on this? Need any more clarification? Anything from you guys? No?
I think Chairman Kelly for the CIC expressed that even though he wasn't there, I was there and there was a lot of discussion. The committee felt very strongly about Arlington Street Community Center, the way that was presented. There were concerns, it was still in the capital budget on the participatory budgeting. The concern, I think, was that there wasn't a project for them to review to compare against the other projects.
Mm-hmm.
It was just a sum of money that would be out there that could be expended without any comparison to other projects. And they may tweak this process so that works with the budget process in the future depending on where that fares with, I think, the Board of Aldermen at some point. And so the committee felt the D rating was deferable, is I think the term we use, but it was an acceptable project at this point, but could be deferable until they can come up with actual projects as part of that process. I'm sorry, I'm a little winded on this, but I think you get the drift.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, one quick discussion. So, the community center was rated as an A1. Thank you, Mr. CIP Chair. Because it will remedy a condition dangerous to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That's the description of A's essential. Of projects which will provide facilities for critically needed community programs. I guess that's, that's where, that's the criteria, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm still trying to get over where my red listed bridge projects are.
You've got your money.
It's a D.
We'll find money to put a plaque on top of that bridge right there. Put your name on it.
Okay, so, any other comments, discussion? Somebody want to make a motion either way for a positive referral or a negative recommendation? Mr. Weber?
I'll make a motion to have a positive recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion before us from Mr. Weber. Take a positive recommendation for the 2018 Capital Improvement Program. I guess these are amendments, right, to it as presented? A second on that? Anybody? Mr. Peterson? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? None? Motion passes. Okay, next item we have is other business number three, referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed 0-17-039. I guess it's O-17-039, amending the zoning map by expanding the historic overlay district for Greeley Park. Mr. Weber, are you gonna talk about this one?
Yes, what the historical district is, I mean, historical commission is, district commission is, we're trying to expand and protect historical properties that we feel is necessary to the city. Greeley Park has a lot of distinction. If you've gone there, there's, there's some plaques, there's some houses. This used to be the Greeley Farm at one time, was dedic, you know, donated to the city and there's buildings there that are very old and we'd like to have them kept up. Whenever there is a change, it would come before the historical district commission to ensure, we would try to ensure that they keep their historic value and presence so that no one can come in and just say, oh gee, I'd like to change it and put this building up. And it wouldn't be, in the area, it wouldn't be the same as the area. It would change its, its appearance. That's what we try to do.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Now that it's identified as a historical district, does that allow you to make applications for additional funding to repair sidewalks, to modify buildings?
Yes, there's a grant program out there that the historic commission, there is several programs, LCHIPS, that the state and federal can, we can go and ask for.
Mr. Robbins?
If, if the historic district, if the historic commission is presented with, with something, with a proposal that the commission feels is, is not appropriate, that, then what happens?
It has to be something really out of the ordinary that would stand out like a sore It, it does have to come before us, any, any permitted building has to come before us. And then there's a process that they can actually take before a court system if they do not agree with the historic commission.
My, my concern, on the face of it, this, you know, this sounds wonderful, protect what's there. Greeley Park is unique for any number of reasons. One of them is that it is directly under the purview of the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen have control of Greeley Park essentially, unlike any other park in the city of Nashua. They determine what happens. You, you can't plant a tree in Greeley Park without the Board of Aldermen deciding. And maybe a little bit of an overstatement, you can't, you can't put up a shed in Greeley Park without, you can't do anything in Greeley Park without the Board of Aldermen being a part of it. And I have a couple of concerns with this, which I, I take to be very well intended and, and, and positive. One of them is, I have no idea what would happen if there were a conflict between the Board of Aldermen and Historic Commission. I don't know what would happen. And, and I'm not an attorney and I, I, I can't even imagine. Greeley Park has been protected for decades. The Board of Aldermen passed, proposed and passed several sections of legislation over the years to take more and more control over this. And my sense is that, all things considered, the Aldermen have done a pretty good job. And to add another layer to that may be, at, at the very least unnecessary and at the very most may be creating unintended consequences that would be problematic in the future. So, I, I think we really ought to consider this very carefully. The, the second thing is that most of what I'm reading about the, the historic overlay district is, talks about overlay of where people live and, and where there are businesses. And it talks about, in this analysis, you know, if owners of property are overwhelmingly opposed to something, then that is, is evidence on the face of it that, that it is not appropriate for it to be in the historic district. Greeley Park is, is, is a park. Nobody lives there. Nobody lives there, nobody, you know, conducts business there. It, it kind of doesn't fit into this directly. So, so my, my suggestion is that as we talk about this, we, we look at it very carefully. Could I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
There are a number of, of opportunities presented to the city through a stepped process. For example, let's take the airport. It's an authority and it's ninety-ten money, which means that for every dollar you spend, you get back ten. Planning process also includes developing a master plan. Without it, you don't qualify for grant money. I put this in the same category. If you don't make it part of the historic district, you can't qualify to go off and get money to do repairs or whatever is necessary. It's a way of leveraging, as I see it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Yeah.
There are a number of opportunities like that in the city that if you take the first step, the next step is a big one and you don't suffer. You don't have to pay. And I view this one as the same one.
The Aldermen do not lose control. They don't lose control of whatever they're doing. And they're gonna be voting on this too. If they see any conflict, they're gonna be like, no way. They wouldn't, there, there's a committee, I believe that there's gonna be a committee first and to talk about this and then bring it forth. June 20th, it's supposed to be coming before the whole Aldermanic.
If I could...
Yep, go ahead.
There is one, any, I think it's a good idea to, to get the comments from the Historic District Commission on if there were changes to the Nice Stone restroom, there's a park headquarters there, there's a ban shelf, there's several structures there that, you know, if there were to be changes, they might value the input of the Historic District Commission. If there is a dispute, that is settled by an appeal to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Generally speaking, I haven't really seen a lot of disputes where it gets to that level. So, and it's a resource that, for the city, to get the comments, it would be required in this case. And I believe Greeley Park, and Steve, correct me, it's, it's an historic park, is it not? And it's one of the first parks in the city. It's known, it's, it's, it's got a lot of ambience. People come from other towns to go to Greeley Park. It's noted as a good place for photography and it's a recreational site as well. It's a, it's a truly an asset to the city. And maybe this designation recognizes that asset.
The, the other aspect that controls what happens in Greeley Park are covenants that go, that came with the transfer of the, the farm to the city. I couldn't tell you what they are, what those covenants are, but they, they do add some control as to what can be built or what can be done in there. But I wanted to ask Roger, this is on Aldermanic Legislation Referral. Do you know what position the administration is on this? Are they in support of this?
I haven't been approached on this. It's been driven primarily by the Historic District Commission and they have an Aldermanic representative from Ward Three, Alderman Shoneman. And they are looking at this as a first step to recognize the park and as Dan mentioned that it might provide some opportunities for grants and other things for the park in the future if, if they are designated.
Right. And the reason why I'm asking that is because it's park, Parks and Recreation Headquarters, if they continue to do the operations there and they needed to, you know, add to their facilities so they can improve the operations, this could be a, could pose, you know, certain burdens on them, financial burdens if they have to conform to historic district requirements and so on, which are normally applied to buildings.
Great.
You know, on the other hand though, you know, a whole bunch of private properties are subject to the historic district requirements and they don't seem to have a problem. I think the commission works very well. You know, Mr. Weber knows that, he's there.
Yeah.
Works well with every applicant. But the, the thing is, when it comes to a public, like, you know, entity, you see when an agency, like a permitting agency, where they tend to put extra requirements because they know they can, they can get it, it can, you know, make them pay the extra dollar, put the extra path, put the extra finish and that kind of thing. So, I don't know, to me, it can go both ways for us. But as part of public works, I'm just a little bit concerned about what Parks and Recreation can do when this gets in place or what they're limited, you know, what, what their ability would be at, at that time. And the, and the other thing, there's a lot of talk here about, about grants and so on. I wouldn't overstate that because whereas the airport can really attract grants from, you know, through the Federal Aviation, when it comes to parks and so on, the kind of grants you see are the HUD grants, the EDI grants and so on, and those are typically small in number, you know, small, small numbers and they won't do much for you really. And if, if this is a, this is one of the goals of making this part of historic, I don't think you're gonna see much. And those, most of those grants come with a lot of strings attached, so I, I wouldn't, as I said, overstate that aspect.
But if it's not part of a district, you haven't got the opportunity even applying.
Great.
Yeah, usually you expect...
If I may respond to that?
Yeah.
I, my, my understanding is that one, one can write a grant for anything.
If you follow the process, you're true.
There are, there are, there are all sorts of, it, it may be that one does not have access to a specific type of, of grant that has certain criteria, but there are all sorts of grants that are available for all sorts of things. So, I would, again, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on this, but not, not because I don't think that this is well intended. I am just concerned, without having more information, that it opens, it has the potential to open a can of worms. And I think that, that the park is, is well supervised, well governed, well protected. And this just adds another, another layer to it. But again, I think this is a very well intended piece of business. So, I'm not voting against it because I, I disagree with that, but I, I have probably said enough, so I'll shut up.
You can say as much as you want.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
The city doesn't require a fee for other city agencies to appear before a board, so the, any fees would be waived. It's just a question of time and just coming in to explain to the Historic District Commission what you're doing and with the set of plans before a building permit.
I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing all the time because, you know...
Well, one of the things that I kinda, I wanna kinda give you an understanding, we just had Nashua Country Club come in.
Yeah.
And it wasn't part of the historical district, it wasn't reviewed by us. But what they did is they kept the, the ambience of the existing. Now, they didn't have to do that. But what we try to do in the historic district is to ensure that buildings that are repaired or put in there, and we had nine Abbott come in. And they came in with the, they brought in new windows, but they had a nice appearance of historic quality. of historic quality. It wasn't an added feature, it was just they maintained. And so now you have the ambience of what was there before, way back actually, isn't there now. It's going to be built, so it reflects what it is. And it keeps these ultramodern houses being built on a back porch or something like that that doesn't reflect the historical district that it is. It keeps your historic districts. That's what it's about.
What else? Someone want to make a motion? Dan, let's do it.
I'll make a motion because it's online.
All right, go ahead.
I'll make a positive, a motion for a positive response.
Referral?
Yes, referral.
So, you have a motion before us for O-D, um, positive referral to the Board of Aldermen on the proposed O dash seventeen dash zero thirty-nine? Any second to that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Kelly, a second? Any further discussion?
This one I'll abstain on because I, like Mr. Robbins, I don't think I have enough information.
All right, we'll just go through the vote here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Little hand raised because we've got three.
I'm going to abstain. I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, let me do those against. Anyone against?
Yes. Are you asking for a review of the vote?
Well, I'm just, no, I'm doing, all those in favor, we had three, right? That's what I saw, myself, Weber and Kelly. All those against? Mr. Robbins, abstentions? Mr. Peterson, Mr. Ducrene. So, it's three of them.
Three, one, two.
Three, one, two, so that passes. Okay? Okay, let's move on. We have one more thing and this is the new business number four, referral from the Aldermanic Planning and Economic Development regarding amendment to P E B C O dash seventeen dash O thirty-six. I think Roger, you want to address this for any, so...
Yes, I can. This legislation went to the board, I believe at your last meeting or the meeting before, he made a favorable recommendation on it.
Right.
And that was passed on to the Planning and Economic Development Committee as well as the Board of Aldermen. The Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Aldermanic Committee Subcommittee, held a public hearing. They discussed it at their last meeting, I believe on the twenty-third of May. They discussed making some, some changes primarily under the section B one on the first page, you have the amended version. The committee wanted to get some feedback from the planning board on this issue. And they also had asked for a review by Corporation Council as well, which they didn't have at their meeting. And they provided that to them now. And this is since we put this on your agenda. And they're going to reconsider this amendment at their meeting on June twentieth, as I understand. I had a communication from the chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee late today. And so their intent is to maybe look at this further. It, it may revert back to the original version, which you already recommended on, in which case it wouldn't need your re-review. Typically, the Board of Aldermen refer items to the board, not the subcommittees. But I think they felt that they wanted to get your comments. But now, having received comments from legal, they want to maybe revisit, maybe detweet the language so it's more consistent with state law. And so I would recommend that you either table it to a date certain or just, you could table it to the thirteenth. If we need to hear it, I guess that would be your next meeting after their meeting on the twentieth. If, if it goes away, then there's no need for you to review it again. Aldermen typically, if, if the legislation is modified by the Aldermanic Planning Committee, they pass that recommendation on to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen don't need to have it referred back to the planning board unless they want to.
Right.
That's their discretion. And if it's a major change, they, they often do. They'll send it back to the board to get your opinion on that change if they feel significant. If they don't, it won't happen.
Yeah.
I know it's confusing, but that's...
No, I mean, it makes sense to me. We already approved it one way, they want to make a change, but it sounds like they're still planning on making another change, so...
Yeah.
To me, it doesn't make sense to review something that we know is going to change again or is intended to change. We might as well wait till we understand.
You could just hold it on the table until you hear from committee.
So, that'd be my recommendation is that we just hold off until we need to, we may never need to look at it again or if they don't, if they go back, so...
My, my point is that, you know, this, this is a pretty heady ordinance, something that requires time to, to review. We've had three minutes. It came in our package tonight.
Right.
And I would say table it for that reason.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we can just table it if we don't think we're ready to review it, that's fine.
So, I have a separate question, Roger. So, what we found in our packet that says confidential from the, from attorney to the board?
That is attorney-client privilege to the board, yes. That's on the confidentiality, yes.
So, this isn't a public document?
No.
No.
I'd rather not have it.
It does.
Well, it is. It's your, it's your, it's communication under attorney-client privilege to the board members.
And what was the intention of it? Because I was reading it and it doesn't say what it's doing. Is it providing clarification?
This is the memo, the same memo that's going to the committee and you have it in your possession. You know, if this ordinance is not amended and the, and that issue is not resolved, then it will probably come back to this board and you can either say you like this or you don't.
Okay, because it is addressed to the board and copied to the committee?
It is.
So, it seems like it was kind of telling us something.
Right, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
What it says is basically they, it's outlining in that memo to you that there's an issue and it needs to get resolved and it's going back to committee to get resolved.
Okay.
I mean, I just recommend we table it until we...
Yeah, even more, even more to table.
There's no reason to look at it because it, it may not be in final form, so...
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation, someone just make the motion that we don't, don't review it until it's in final form.
Move that we table.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Robbins to leave this on table. Any second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, that is all we have on our list as far as I can see. Right? That's all we got, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to retire.
Retire? Retire, come on!
Retired of Martha.
A adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at nine eighteen.
How many times are they going to retire?
I don't think I have the confidentiality.
You've got to do at least one serious retirement. That's because they don't trust you.
I didn't get my clear.
These minutes right here, right?
I've been hanging out with Jerry too much.
Okay. Because it's something I can't share with you. I'll give you a copy.
Need to know places.
Now, that's to be awake. Ready? They're good chairs, yeah?
Yeah.
Another twenty. Another twenty years. See, they've got to go step around and see who's taller chairs, Roger.
Mr. Weber. Mr. Weber, this is yours, yeah?
They certainly have held up well.
Because you take care of them.
They're tough, yeah. Yeah, they're tough.
For throwing the mayor's suit, his principal conference, the clarification, I don't know how we deal with this stuff. One of these same twenty-two, it was endorsed by his office. First thought I brought out it's to come through these papers. And then that other one about the historic commission in Greeley Park, I just wanted... Oh, well, um... ...